June 23, 2025. We will start with introductions of the dais. Kristi, we'll start with you.
Kristy Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Herme, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer Odom is Commissioner.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Ann Schooli, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
Thank you. I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse. I'm sorry, it's June 24th. I think I said it was the 23rd. It's my brother's birthday, so that's something I need to, I'll have to call him later. All right, so we've got a presentation here at the top of the meeting. We're excited to have some special guests with us. We've got Molly Lyons, Christian, or I'm sorry, Kristen Sands and Joshua Jones, and we're going to have a presentation for Disability Pride Month. And so we have a proclamation which we will read and then have you all come up and talk to us, or maybe we'll do it in reverse. Please talk to us about the importance of disability pride, and then we'll do the proclamation after that. How about that? So I don't know which one of you is coming first, but please come forward. Very good.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm going to start by saying I'm probably not the most qualified person to be standing at this podium to talk about disability pride, but I am Josh Jones. I think most of you know who I am, but I'm speaking on behalf of our, the Disabilities ERG today. And so I don't know if any of the ERG members are actually here. I did have a slide deck. I don't, cool. So I am here to talk a little bit about disability pride, disability pride month, why it's important, and how we can be celebrating. And so just unfortunately, Melissa could not be here. She's much more qualified to talk about this than I am. But we were going to co-present, but she had to be out. So what is Disability Pride Month? It's an annual observance in July that celebrates people with disabilities, commemorates the signing of the ADA, it's the 35th anniversary, and promotes disability culture and visibility. It recognizes the history, accomplishments, and struggles of people with disabilities. It affirms that disability is a natural and valuable part of human diversity, not a deficit or something that needs to be fixed. And so in a nation where the estimate is one in four adults live with a disability, that's a number that comes from the Department of Health and Human Services, Disability Pride Month calls on everybody to promote inclusion. I did poll a few local statistics. So the Hamilton County population as of the 2020 census was 830,639. So only about 9.3% of people under the age of 65 reported living with a disability. That's a much lower percentage than the one in four estimated adults. I don't necessarily think that means that fewer people are living with disabilities. I think people, fewer people might be disclosing or getting proper diagnosis, right? And just because I work in HR, I was looking at Hamilton County employee statistics. So of our 4,700 and change employees, only 1.6% of employees have disclosed. Again, I don't necessarily think that only 1.6 people working for the county are, are living with a disability, but they might fear disclosure. And that's why it's so important to celebrate Disability Pride Month. People with disabilities still face barriers to being fully included and valued. There's systemic ableism that is often ignored, but the effects are still very real. It limits access to education, jobs, healthcare, overall well-being. And so at its core, disability pride is about being accepted on their terms, right? Because everybody deserves inclusion rights and respect without having to earn them. And I think, again, it just kind of is important to reiterate that many disabilities go undiagnosed or undisclosed because of stigma, and that could possibly explain the gap in numbers that we're seeing. I also want to emphasize that policy and legislation do not create cultural change, so it's important to leverage opportunities to celebrate in order to forge that shift. Things like today's proclamation, which I hope leads to tomorrow's disability pride flag raising, which is what the ERG wants to recommend. And that, I believe, oh, I've got one slide before that. So people with disabilities often face heightened inequities when accessing healthcare. Again, they might not get the proper diagnosis. They may not receive the correct resources or treatment. They face heightened inequities in the criminal justice system, especially with mental health conditions. They can often experience heightened inequities in education where, again, they're just not receiving the correct or proper resources. So that's why we celebrate, right? We celebrate the visibility. We celebrate the ongoing challenge. And I wanted to, in case you didn't know, there is a disability pride flag. And so that's what the ERG wants to recommend, looking ahead at future years, kind of working with the city in the same way that we do for Pride Month, and raising the disability pride flag for July. So on this slide, it just gives a little bit of the history of the disability pride flag, created back in 2016, redesigned in 2019 for accessibility purposes. Again, just a visual representation of the various disabilities for, where black represents victimization or violence against people with disabilities. Red represents physical disabilities. Gold represents cognitive and intellectual disabilities. White represents the non-visible or undiagnosed. Blue represents psychiatric disabilities. And green represents sensory disabilities. So in a similar way, that the LGBTQ+ pride flag is a symbol of inclusion and empowerment, so is this, right? It represents pride, visibility from an ally perspective. It represents solidarity with and commitment to, to the disability community, promotes acceptance and celebration with people with diverse abilities. And so again, similar to other pride, or similar to other flag raisings throughout the year, the Disabilities ERG recommends that we work in conjunction with the city to raise our own disability pride flag. If you didn't know, the city is raising theirs on Tuesday, July 1st at 11:00. Again, this is an opportunity to raise awareness for disability rights and visibility, celebrate Disability Pride Month, promote inclusion and acceptance in the community, honor contributions by disabled residents and disabled employees, and really just engage the community in a kind of demonstration of support and advocacy. That is all I had. I wanted to make it as quick as possible because, again, I'm not the right person to be talking about all of this. But I just wanted to thank you for your time, and I will turn it over to my friends at LAD.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, guys. So I'm Molly Lyons. I'm the Chief Development Officer at LAD. For one, I want to say we are so grateful for the partnership we have with the county and the work that you are supporting for affordable housing for people with disabilities. I do want to talk a little bit about what we're doing locally for Disability Pride Month, a coalition of local governments, which we've worked with the administration here in the county, as well as the city local governments and arts organizations, and also provider organizations, and then disabled advocates and their families and friends to create a month-long celebration for Disability Pride Month. So there's some assets. Joshua has some. There's events that are happening all through the month of July. There's arts events. There's provider events. So you can come to our website, disabilitypridesincy, to get more information about the things that you can do and participate in. And then I'm going to really quickly pass it over to Kristen Saul.
Welcome.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kristen Saul, and I'm so excited to be here. Hamilton County Commissioners formally recognizes and celebrates people with the disabilities in our community. I'm here as a person with disabilities and a member of LAD's Board of Directors and a Chair of LAD's Empowerment Committee to thank the Commissioners for all the ways you support and have shown our people with disabilities in our community. When I first came to LAD, a 50-year-old organization that supported people with developmental disabilities, I had been in somewhat rough situations, rough living situations myself. I had no idea not only would I find a safe home, I would also find a community that encourages me to demand more and to advocate to be fully seen and included. Today, I get to see my disabilities celebrated by Hamilton County, the county I have lived in my whole life. I get to witness the community make a commitment and embrace and include all people. Today we stand on the backs of others, of disability advocates, for the families, the supporters who throughout history have demanded more, people who have held sit-in, fixed lawsuits, and crawled up the steps of the national Capitol, demanding that we have the right to enter buildings, live in our community, vote, and receive education, and have jobs that pay fair wages. For as long as I live, I will continue to fight for the people to be fully seen and included and in our community. Thank you to everyone here, everyone who came before me, my mom, all the people at LAD who helped me achieve my goals, to our elected representatives who believe and show that all people have abilities and value. I'm truly proud. I'm truly proud to be one of your representatives of the disabled community in Hamilton County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're proud of you, I must say. Thank you for bringing it home for us here. So we're, we're going to offer a few comments.
I just want to say one more thing. We are fighting right now as disability communities for people to be paid fair wages from their jobs. It is important that the, the Board of Community Commissioners of Hamilton County and of other county commissioners stand with us. We need to be paid our fair wages. We absolutely do. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So we'll offer a couple of comments and then read the proclamation and get a photograph with all of you, if that's okay. Thank you for bringing up the housing piece. We, as a board, are very committed to people in this community with disabilities, and we have prioritized that particularly through the housing work that we're doing with LAD. And so we're really proud of the work. So thank you for mentioning that. A couple of other things, though. We've got our Economic Inclusion and Equity Department here at the county, and people with disabilities have always been represented on that board since its inception to make sure that there is a seat at the table for everybody. When we talk about inclusion, we mean inclusion. And so people with disabilities have sat at the table and have been very valuable as we have thought through our policies here at the county. And then we very recently passed a resolution to form a task force to make sure that we've got the lens of people with disabilities added to the work that we are doing. And I think it's going to be really interesting and important to hear from that organization. So we'll keep you in the loop on that. Maybe there are seats at that table, so perhaps LAD should have a seat at the table. So we'll have to work on that. But, but thank you so much. This is a, it's a reminder, we did this last year, it's a reminder of the work we are doing and the work we need to continue to do to make sure everybody in the county thrives. So really, really appreciate you all being here. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Thank you so much for your presentations. Just very touching. I appreciate it. Very heartfelt, of course. And those who know me know that I celebrate all people and especially those with disabilities. I say woe is me. We all have disabilities. Some are more visible than others, but we need to acknowledge everyone and celebrate them for who they are. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for your words. People with disabilities is the number one minority group in this country. And we have to make sure that we are inclusive at every level. I'm very excited about our partnership of our Disability Day with our 513 relief bus connecting folks to the services as well, and really excited about that partnership that we do every year now. It was mentioned earlier about the housing project, and I just want to say, LAD, thank you for bringing that to us when we were having the public hearings about what can we do for affordable housing. And you brought us an innovative, technology-based smart home. I mean, it's a national model, and I'm happy that we're able to move forward with that. I think Corbin Township will be up soon, but I see this as a national model where people will come here and learn how we did it. We got a chance to tour one of them. It was just an amazing, an amazing project. So we want to thank you for that as well. So I'm excited to have this proclamation, but as Commissioner President Dreehouse indicated, we now will have a, a group that will be advising the county on a number of things throughout the county. And I was very pleased many, many, many moons ago, being on the city side and as a council member then, and working with LAD at that time. And that's how we were able to have a, an organization there, but also one of action. So that's why the curbs on, the street curbs had to come in. Back then, we had taxi cabs. That's how long ago it was. We were talking about taxi cabs. We didn't have Uber. We had a law for taxi cabs. I mean, we really were doing it. I learned a lot from my mother being in a wheelchair for 12 years. And it's just from shopping. I mean, it's just so many different things. And then lastly, I just want to say with the, I'm very proud of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, we brought in a consultant to handle, to make sure, because we wanted it to be accessible. I think we're one of the most accessible outdoor music monuments in the country with the Braille, with the, the levels of reading. I mean, they just really did it all, and I'm excited that there'll be a Disability Day down there coming soon. So we're very proud of it, and we're, I just wanted to say, we're doing a proclamation, but we as a board are also doing a lot of substantive work to make sure that this county is one Hamilton County. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to read the proclamation. This is a proclamation recognizing July as Disability Pride Month. Whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated annually in the month of July to commemorate the signing of the American With Disabilities Act on July 26, 1990.
And whereas the ADA protects the rights of people with disabilities against employment discrimination while fostering inclusion in society. And whereas a 2019 Ohio Medicaid Assessment Survey estimates that 36.1% of adults in the state of Ohio have at least one type of disability, which is higher than the national average of 25.6%. And whereas Disability Pride Month highlights the achievements, contributions, and culture of individuals with disabilities while raising awareness for the issues facing the community.
Whereas Disability Pride Month honors individuals with disabilities and further emphasizes the vital role that they play within their communities. And whereas many individuals with disabilities still face barriers to being fully included and valued. And Disability Pride Month aims to exhibit that everyone deserves inclusion rights and respect. Whereas Hamilton County is committed to supporting individuals with disabilities reflected through initiatives such as the Employee Resource, Resource Group for individuals with disabilities that work for the county, as well as the recently passed resolution to create the Hamilton County Accessibility Advisory Board.
Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Disability Pride Month in all of Hamilton County. All right, we're going to come around and take a photo. Let's follow up on that with, with my staff. Okay. Thank you all again for being here. Our next item is related to the Headquarters Hotel update. We've got Kate Westbrook, the Senior Vice President of 3CDC here. She is, come on forward. I know that you've got a presentation. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. I'm also joined by Reed Scott, who's Vice President of Portman Holdings, the actual developer for the hotel.
Great, thank you.
He'll, we'll kind of tag team the presentation.
Very good.
Bear with us as we switch spots a couple of times. Is it, are you able to make it larger? Perfect. You can start at that, on the map slide. Just, or wait, no, sorry, I have the clicker. I'm in control now. Okay. So like I said, my name is Katie Westbrook. I'm Senior Vice President of Development at 3CDC, and I'm going to kick off by first giving just, you know, setting the stage, what the convention district is. I'm going to give an update on the convention center itself, and then I'll hand it over to Reed to talk more about the specifics of the hotel. I think everyone is familiar with where the convention district is, but it's really that southwest quadrant of downtown Cincinnati, you know, anchored by about $1.3 billion worth of investment that private developers, the city and the county will all have contributed once we're complete with the hotel. In addition to that, we have completed about $368 million of development to date, starting with 8451 Headquarters, which was complete back in 2015. And then more recently, there was the Fourth and Race Development, the Foundry that anchors Fountain Square. And then we're wrapping up construction on the Core and Shell for Paycor Headquarters, which should be fully complete at the end of the year with Paycor moving in. And we have about $829 million of work that is either underway or planned to start later this year. So jumping into the convention center itself, I'm happy to bring a really great update forward. As a reminder, we closed on financing in May of 2024 on the $264 million project. When we closed, we were fortunate enough to kind of reap the benefits of positive market conditions, and we were able to produce a larger surplus of bond proceeds than we had originally anticipated, which has led to all project scope being included, and we were not required to rely on any type of third-party financing for any aspects of the project. In addition to that, our great construction management team of Messer, Triversity, and Johnston did really well at buying out our GMP. And so we also realized pretty significant savings on the actual construction costs itself. In terms of where we sit with buyout participation, as a reminder, we had a goal of minority participation of 20% with a reach of 25%, and we're sitting at 21.5% today. Women-owned businesses, our goal was 10% with a reach of 15, and we're just under 12%. And then we did not have a formal goal for union subcontractor participation, but we did work very hard to reach 60% inclusion. So we're really proud of that. Those same goals will be translated into the development agreement with the hotel, and we will actually be formalizing the union subcontractor goal in the agreement. And lastly, I'm happy to report that we are on schedule. So if you can believe it, but we'll be finished in about six months. And we have the first event planned for January 13th, which is Reds Fest. So I hope everyone will plan to attend that. Slide eight is just really walking you through, you know, reminding you what the building is going to look like, really focused on transforming the exterior of the building and really modernizing its presence downtown. And similarly, on the inside, you know, transforming all the finishes, reimagining that entrance in the lobby. And then there's a significant overhaul of mechanical, electric, and plumbing as well. And then in addition, we have incorporated the former Millennium Site into the project as well. And we've closed Elm Street between Fifth and Sixth Street and are under construction for the new Elm Street Plaza. So creating this kind of urban oasis that will really, first and foremost, be an asset for the convention center and really a great marketing tool. But then, secondly, I think will really soften this portion of downtown and I think lead to additional development surrounding it in the future. I hope you've driven or walked past the site recently. These pictures are just giving you a couple of bird's eye views of what, what progress looks like. And the facade itself is really taking shape. Just about a week and a half ago, we actually started putting the metal panels up on the inclines, so the yellow color will soon go away and it'll be a nice, more appealing gray finish. And then on the far right, you can see what the plaza looks like right now. So we will be actually opening the plaza in November, so about two months before the rest of the convention center. So I'm going to turn it over to Reed to talk about the hotel.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry for not introducing you. I didn't realize.
Not a problem at all. Thank you for having us today. Thank you to Hamilton County and the Board of County Commissioners, the staff, and everybody that's helping in the room and outside of it to, to help bring this project to fruition. Grateful for your partnership. Reed Scott with Portman Holdings, representing the development partner for this project. Just going to talk a little bit about the hotel and where we stand today, and then I'll hand it back over to Katie for a few last slides. But where we are today, showing some new renderings updated for viewing audience. We're looking at a project's cost of about $536 million. We are anticipating a financial close in the fourth quarter of this year. We'll get a little bit more into the plan finance and what we're looking at for bringing that to fruition with a construction completion in the second quarter of 2028. We're estimating about a 30 to 31-month actual construction timeline with probably a month of operator move-in, getting the building ready for welcoming guests. So where we stand today, the program is being done in partnership with what I will say is an international full-service hotel brand. We have a signed agreement now that we will plan in the next couple of weeks announcing, I think, who that is, or going through some marketing and typical provisions of an agreement of how we release public disclosures. But we are very excited about our development partner, our operating partner. It is a best-in-class brand. We think the city and all the partners will be happy with it, and the county as well. We are looking at 700 keys. We'll get into the sizing of this a little bit later as we talk about the overall downtown lodging market and how we've arrived at that. That's inclusive of about 62,000 to 63,000 square feet of net interior meeting space. That's boardrooms, ballrooms. We will have the largest hotel ballroom in the city upon completion, really helping to build kind of the, the ecosphere with the convention center and creating kind of an all-inclusive meeting destination that's going to be able to accommodate some larger groups than I think the city's ever been able to accommodate before in a good manner. We additionally have about 17,000 to 18,000 square feet of rooftop terrace space on the sixth floor that'll be also able to be used for events. We have some unique kind of hybrid indoor/outdoor spaces that I think are going to be really unique for a hotel across the country and provide a great offering, especially during warmer months, but we can program that year-round. Beyond that, it's typical full-service amenities you would expect in a hotel of this quality. We've got a three-meal restaurant that's running Fifth Street, hoping to kind of expand the corridor from Fountain Square down to the convention center so that that's fully activated and better so than it is today. We'll have a hotel bar sitting above that also overlooking Fifth Street that really sits off the main lobby with an exterior terrace allowing people to come out and look over Fifth Street. There's going to be a great visual connection between the interior lobby and the convention center. So it's a very intuitive property for how people are arriving and going back and forth between the two properties. And there is going to be a sky bridge connecting them that we're working with the county on to, to deliver. One thing we felt was pretty critical for bringing into the project was the sky bridge because that is something that meeting planners around the country view as a critical offering to be a competitive convention hotel. Basically, individuals who are working and putting on shows, having the ability to move quickly between the properties when they're there for three or four days. It's really critical to how they sell space to meeting planners and bring groups inclusive of that. A couple of notes on the project team. We are Portman Holdings, the developer. We are working with Skanska in a pre-construction manner right now. They will be our general contractor on the project. We've got a great design team of national and local parties. Cooper Carey is our lead architect. Moody Nolan and their local office here in Cincinnati are helping as the local architect partner. Parker Torres is doing interior design. Bayer Becker in their office locally are helping with civil engineering, and CMTA's local office is helping with mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. There's various other consultants on the team that are helping out here as well, but those are kind of our, our principal design partners. And then we obviously have great public parties supporting this, first and foremost, Hamilton County, the City of Cincinnati, and then the state of Ohio. Amongst the rest of the team, we have the finance and legal team of Piper Sandler, who's helping to do the private placement of capital on the project. KMK is helping us with legal work here locally. And then bond counsel will be Frost, Brown, Todd, and Dinsmore, as mentioned. As mentioned, the anticipated timeline is that we've already actually been doing light site work on the site to remove existing environmental conditions, go through testing. So you may have seen some work occurring there to date. We are looking for public approvals of the development agreement, the room block agreements, in the September timeframe for an ultimate financing in November and then opening in mid-2028. So talking quickly through how we're coming together on our plan of finance. We have several identified sources listed here today from the public side. One is a one-time strategic grant from the State of Ohio. That has been confirmed and approved for the project to date. We were also approved for a large transformational mixed-use development tax credit, which we were granted $40 million worth of credit value that will then sell at a slightly discounted rate relative to how that program works. And we may employ that in a bridge loan scenario, which is why you see the word "bridge" there, to use those credits during construction. We then have port and state bonds that are going to be backed by the various revenue generated by the project, including the hotel tax rebates, as well as a new community authority and TIF in about $117 million of estimated costs or resources. And then we have city bonds that were approved last week in the amount of $40 million, and there's various Convention Center savings anticipated of about $10 million. From the private side, we're matching a little over 50% of equity. That'll come from Portman and our various partners to be identified later. A construction loan, key money in $17.5 million, which is confirmed and approved to date. That'll come from our operator partner to support the project and show alignment with us. And the interest earnings is really kind of money sitting in bank accounts we can use if it's earned. What we do have at the bottom is about a $20 million funding gap that we're still working to close in various manners, mostly through project management, which we think is healthy at this point. It's 3% to 4% of the overall budget. It's not atypical for where we stand right now as we advance towards closing later this year. And then, uses on the side, in total aggregate, inclusive of all our financing reserves, we're looking at about $537 million for the total budget. So going with that funding gap, the ways we're really going to try and attack this, generally better construction pricing and cost-efficient engineering solutions. We're going through pricing updates right now that we anticipate getting some information back next month so that we understand where we stand, and hopefully that'll reconfigure a few of the budget line items for the better. Generally, we're anticipating better market conditions. It's obviously a little bit tough to project where everything's going with interest rates and other items across the macro market, but it does sound like we're going to see some better conditions evolve over the coming months that will help, I think, close that gap. And then, one thing that we feel critical to keep in our project budget at this point that we would hope to reduce as we go along is that we do carry a very healthy contingency, just making sure that we're staying within the budget headline number we've got today. We're bringing it down. As we get closer to a groundbreaking, we feel that we could probably reduce that to close the financing a bit better. And so, going back to how we got to our current sizing of the hotel, and one of the things we wanted to communicate as part of Portman's commitment to the city and the overall lodging and landscape is, well, I can't say what property because of some NDA provisions. Portman is committed to closing on a large hotel downtown in near vicinity of the site. Our intent really, when we got into this, was to try and see how we could best enhance the overall convention market in downtown Cincinnati. And I think one of the things we saw very quickly was part of the ability to improve the offering that Cincinnati has is to acquire an existing hotel and renovate it, because I think we'd seen some of what had played out with the Millennium, where we had a dated condition hotel supply. It started to drag down the market overall. So in tandem with delivering a more feasible new development, we can also commit to renovation and a major renovation and overhaul of one of the city's largest properties to bring the overall lodging market up in a greater number than just the original 800 keys we were looking for in the new hotel. So we downsized to better attract financing efforts at the end of the day for the new convention hotel. That will come with a modernized hotel supply down the line that I think will be overall benefit overall, the downtown market in Hamilton County. Ultimately, we'll still see the supply in downtown increased by about 19%, and that's really looking at our hotel. There are additional hotel projects in the works downtown that I think are going to continue to increase that supply. And we feel that it's going to be a very healthy market. We're anticipating about a low 70% occupancy to be run at the hotel. So, you know, we still feel that it's appropriately sized now at 700 keys and will be a great offering to the city. Additionally, we do anticipate the hotel we are renovating to become part of a room block agreement similar to what we're doing with the new hotel. So there will be booking rights offered to Visit Cincy that will allow them to better attract groups through a more committed room block as they go and book new groups. So I'm going to hand it back over to Katie.
I'm going to touch on the public subsidy portion, so the three sources that Reid mentioned, the port bond, the state and port bonds, and then the city loan. So first, as a reminder, about two years ago, we had state law changed to allow the hotel tax that's generated at the new Convention Headquarters Hotel to be directly pledged to a borrowing of this type. So it's currently anticipated that that'll start at about $4.8 million and then grow as the hotel projections, or as the hotel continues to operate over the 30 years. In addition, we will be doing a traditional property tax TIF, so estimated about $2.5 million. And then, we plan to institute a new community authority district, similar to what's at the banks, kind of in the central core of downtown, and get that approved by City Council in September. So in total, we have $8.5 million of annual revenue sources that we're able to pledge to first, the state and port bonds. So it'll first be used to service the debt that those two entities will be issuing. And then, the excess from that will be split between the city loan and then turbo-redeemings, early payments to the senior bonds. So 75% will go to the city loan, and then 25% will go to prepay the senior bonds. Reid mentioned last week that we got approval from City Council for ordinance for an issuance of city bonds at $40 million. So I wanted to touch on how that relates to the $50 million loan that I mentioned on the last slide. So the city is planning to make a $50 million loan at a 3% interest rate to the project, and it's made up of two sources. So first, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the Convention Center has been very successful in terms of saving money and earning more proceeds than we had originally anticipated. So the city is planning to reappropriate $10 million of their original $30 million over to the hotel. And then, in addition, they'll be issuing $40 million in proceeds that will be secured by city's non-tax revenue sources. So they will then lump those two together and make a $50 million loan to the project. I already went over how it'll be repaid, but it'll be first in line, or 75% of the excess pledged revenues after the senior bonds will be used to pay down this loan. And if at the end of 30 years there is a balance, the city is planning to forgive that balance, but is not projected to have a balance at the end of the year, or at the end of 30 years. And the city, you know, is committed. I think that they view this as a really, a really great win for the Convention Center and the hotel, the district as a whole. And they're excited that they're able to put together this financing in order to make the project come together at the end. Happy to take questions, comments, but that's all we had for our formal presentation.
Well, thank you. Thank you both for being here. It is an exciting presentation. We've been talking about the Convention Center District for quite some time. The county, as you know, has made some significant investments. In fact, the initial investment to get all this rolling with the Millennium Site. But it's exciting to see not only the progress of the Convention Center, but also the complementary hotel then, across the street, because they obviously work hand-in-hand. So just a couple of questions. You talked, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, so I'll provide that caveat. So the Millennium Site is so important to us, because that was the county's initial investment. That's kind of what got the ball rolling here. But that site creates a really unique opportunity by way of what's happening in the renovated Convention Center, because we can do programming over there, social events over there that are related to what's happening in the Convention Center. And so I think it's a really, I mean, the renderings are beautiful. So it's really exciting to see that we'll have that opportunity for conventioneers to go over and access that space, and I'm hoping it will be programmable by what's going on inside the building. But the other piece of that then is that it functions as public space when it is not being used by the Convention Center. So I don't know if you know the answer to how, kind of how that plays out and what that looks like to make sure that the public has access when available.
Sure. So 3CDC will actually oversee management of Elm Street Plaza. I think, as a reminder, the county owns a portion of Elm Street Plaza. The city owns a portion of it. And the county leased their portion to the city, and then the city will be entering into a management agreement with 3CDC. So it'll actually be a four-party agreement. It'll be 3CDC, the city, Levy, who's doing the food and beverage program for the Convention Center, and then ASM, who manages the Convention Center. So we're just starting negotiations of that agreement, but really it'll function similarly to Fountain Square, Washington Park, where we oversee operations and the programming. But the little bit of difference here is that first and foremost, it'll be an asset to the Convention Center, and then we'll fill in with programming for the general public. And I think, considering that the Convention Center books out so far in advance, we'll be able to really fill in the calendar, you know, closer to when events are actually happening. So we really see it as an easy and complementary activities between us and ASM.
Yeah, I really think that's critically important as we think about having renovated the Convention Center and using that outside space as a bit of an expansion of property that's available for conventions. As far as access, though, will there be fencing around it, or will it be an open space? What is it going to look like?
Yeah, it's generally open. So what was formerly Elm Street, there'll be a couple of bollards just to control vehicles, being able to get in and out. There won't be a tall fence around the rest of it. There'll be kind of like a knee-high fence just to protect the plantings and stuff like that, and then there'll be paths meandering through. So it will feel open. Yeah.
Thank you. I think it's really important, at least to myself, to have public access to that property when it's not being programmed otherwise. Just a couple of other things. First, the other one's more of a comment, and then I've got a question. The financial stack, I think, is really important, of course, to us, that the state's involved, the private side's involved, the city, the county. You've got a lot of participants in the financial stack. I know it took all of that to get us to where we are today, but I do want to offer the compliment of creative financing here to make sure that there's this really robust partnership. And I can't emphasize enough the private side doing their part to make sure that we can get to where we need to be for the financing of the hotel. And then, lastly, I just want to talk about the number of keys, because we've talked about this before. We started, I think, around 800. We're now down at 700, and so I want to dig in just a little bit there. And I understand that there's another hotel that potentially is being acquired by Portman to offset the 100 that's not happening across the street. In fact, get us more, from what I understand, by way of Convention Center blocks, so that conventioneers can not only utilize the new hotel, but also have access to another close-by hotel, and I won't say the name either. But you mentioned the percentage of 19% as the percentage of hotel capacity. Or I just want to, what is standard by way of hotel capacity for conventions? So that I have a better understanding of where we sit in the range of what's available and how it helps us further entice conventions to come here.
Well, I'll just offer one thing. So we've hired, through this whole process of looking at bringing a hotel to the Convention District, we've been working with a third-party HVS, who's kind of a premier consultant in the hospitality world. And so we have them update market study for programming this hotel on a fairly regular basis. And so, based on our conversations with them and their continued analysis of the downtown market, they feel very confident that a 700-room hotel is exactly what we need in order to support the Convention Center and what we need in order to attract those appropriate meetings. We'll end up at about 4,600 rooms downtown, once everything is all said and done. And, you know, Visit Cincy also feels very confident that where they're landing with the additional, the acquisition of the existing hotel and then the new 700 rooms is really going to allow them to sell and attract the types of meetings that we want to bring to the city and the county and that they have not been able to.
You know, I think we analyze every opportunity independently. I don't know, there's, you know, one set ratio that's always going to be like guiding factor for how you size a hotel relative to a convention market. But really, what our analysis comes down to is, one, getting operator input of how they think they can run this. Generally, when, you know, we start to trigger into the, or hit the low 70s occupancy, that's kind of where we see a generally feasible project, I would say. And 700 keys is where they felt they could operate to that standard. I think we were a bit lower on an 800-key version, which gave us some concerns of how financing markets might react and interest in the project. We then look at kind of, they are quantitative factors, but in some sense more qualitative in terms of airlift in the market, the amount of square feet within the Convention Center, current existing supply within, you know, walkable distance of the Convention Center. And taking those and a bunch of other statistics really kind of had us arrive on and looking at the project budget overall, 700 keys is what we felt was ultimately supportable and we think provides for a robust downtown supply. And then, from there, you know, we have seen, in general, once delivering a headquarters hotel, it is kind of a rising tide lifts all boats situation where we feel that as new groups are coming in and better supporting the market and overflowing into surrounding hotels, that puts them in a better position to renovate their product. So you have kind of this overall lift in the market. We are trying to be, as you know, proactive on one of those opportunities and making sure that we commit a room block to this county that is going to be robust and goes beyond, I think, the initial amount of keys we were committed to through just the new hotel itself, to where we're, I think, over 900 keys that we'll have committed versus we were in the kind of 600 range with booking rights of visits and see would have maintained on that. So that's how we generally look at the opportunity. I think if we'd gone much further and you started to see occupancies on the hotel dip into the low 60s from a projection standpoint, that's where you start to kind of get a little uncomfortable of what's going to be supportable and feasible and healthy for the market on an ongoing basis.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Thank you so much for your presentation, and everything looks beautiful. I'm really excited about the date of December 2025. So very happy about that. Not as happy about the hotel completion as this February of 2028. It's just more difficult building the hotel than the Convention Center, just because you have the individual rooms. And just wondering, is that in stone, that right now you're thinking 28 is the soonest it could be completed?
I would say getting ahead of 2028 is going to be almost impossible. Never say nothing can't be done, but I think generally how you have to stage these types of projects and bring them to fruition, that would be a pretty difficult challenge to meet. We've seen roughly 30 to 36 months be the typical timeframes for these types of projects. And so I think we're on the lower end of that range, and we're still pressing with our contractor partners to speed up their construction methods as best as possible. But generally, it becomes a leading item of, you know, pouring concrete has to be done in a certain manner. You're going up 25 floors. So there's just certain things we can't really mitigate much better than I think we are already. But we are certainly going to try and press for an earlier opening to the best we can.
We certainly want to do it right, that's for sure. My thoughts were about the $20 million gap that we have. And so you guys put in there some innovative ways of closing that gap, but I would hope that there are some other thoughts. There's like three different items that you said will close the gap of 20 million. And so are there any other thoughts on how we're going to close that $20 million gap?
Generally, so it'll be a fluid discussion as we go through the financing efforts. You know, what we've put up is a plan of finance that we feel is pretty defensible, and ultimately, what comes to pass could be a little bit different as we get into actually raising capital on the full extent, see how people react and what they're willing to commit, if anything, beyond that to help narrow that gap. I think project management at this point is probably our best strategy for how we ultimately do close that. And it's our hope that, you know, through innovative methods and a good project and a good project management effort, we will be able to close that without really having to go for any kind of outside sources. But ultimately, it's going to be kind of a fluid conversation on if we still see some, you know, gap, how that gets filled and what that is. So I wouldn't be able to confidently say what that's going to be today. But we think we're in a pretty good position to close that and given the low magnitude against the overall project budget at this point.
Well, I see one of the solutions is better construction pricing. And we're thinking prices are going up. So I don't know if that'll, hopefully, it'll be a solution. But, you know, I'm concerned about that gap. We have to do it.
Sure. I think we try and estimate our project budgets using conservative numbers. So once we actually get into full pricing efforts and truly get in bids from the contractor community, you know, it's going to be, depending on what they come back with. And we're hopeful that we've taken a more conservative approach on our budget estimates to what may come back.
I just would suggest, anyone who's listening, if you have questions or comments, who should they contact? Because you talk a little fast. I'm able to keep. Would they call 3CDC or who would they call?
You're welcome to call me in and connect you with Reece.
Okay. That'd be great. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you. We had a different person come before us with Portman when this first started. Can you tell us, what is your position with the company? Are you the finance person or the project manager?
Project manager. I'm the development lead for this project on Portman.
For this project, okay. Yeah, I have a couple of questions because this was really, I kind of asked about this early on and I was, it got dicey. Oh, man, it got dicey. People were mad at me, not the voters. They were mad because I asked the question on getting specifics on the hotel. I come from the tourism background and has actually booked conventions before to come here. And what I understand from conventions is they do not like to be in more than one hotel. Maybe they'll go across the street. But some bids, people didn't even look at us, the ones that we were bidding. I'm talking about some big conventions during some of the toughest times in Cincinnati. And they learned a lot from these conventions. And their bids, they said they want to be in one hotel and across the street. There was a convention that came this year, earlier this year. And they had them staying because of all of the construction. They had them staying at the Hyatt. And then they had them staying at the Hilton. And these people were senior citizens. And there was no way they can walk with a gala gown on and a tuxedo a couple of blocks to get into the ballroom. And they complained about it. And this is a group that books numerous conventions, stuck with us when the times was tough. And also is connected to one of the largest black conventions in the nation. And so their talk was, we can't get the blocks. We can't walk those blocks. What happened to these other cities we can go to and stay in the same hotel and hit the elevator button and go to the ballroom? So I want to be real specific. I know you mentioned you only want the kinds of people we want to book here. I hope it's not some of the ones that's already been here. We'd like to have them coming back because they spent a lot of money. With that being said, on the restart history button, Millennium Hotel, the county spent about $52 million from the demolition, the acquisition, et cetera. And from a taxpayer perspective, we're not getting any money off that property, no money back from that property because we're not building a hotel over there. And we're talking about doing some free events on that property. And if a couple of blocks doesn't matter for hotels, I don't know why going to Fountain Square wouldn't matter for free events. But I won't stay at that point. But what I will say is, yes, Millennium Hotel, it needed to be replaced. But I think we made it needed to have a plan in place because it's been several years of $52 or plus million that's been spent over there. And not one dime at a time when we need money, not one dime of property tax when grandma and everybody has to pay the property tax. There's no property tax coming in. We used to get property tax off of that property. So just on that reset button, now there were 800 rooms over there. Plus, a hotel, we're not going to say the brand, but a hotel that you're picking up, we were picking up rooms. Now we're saying that we're going to go less than 800 rooms and then have an existing hotel that has some rooms. So we lose rooms. We lose the ability to have a convention of a certain size that would require us to have the host hotel be the main hotel, right? And nothing that we can do because we're going to be landlocked on rooms for a major convention that wants to be in the same hotel. So I wanted to put that out. In this, I continuously ask, and boy, did it get heated. Are we, we took out 800 rooms and we owe $52 million in debt. We got to replace at least 800 rooms. And oh, boy, did it get hot. Oh, everybody's upset, running PR campaigns against me, trying to sell to the people that we, Commissioner Reese is wrong. And now here we are in 2025, and we don't have 800 rooms. There was an article that said exclusive in the Inquirer, December 18th, 2024, says exclusive. Sat down with the Inquirer to show the pretty pictures and said, in this exclusive, 800 rooms, said that we would be either groundbreaking or announcing a brand in 2025. This was exclusive, December 18th, 2024. You also had sitting down with the business courier. And there were numerous times that it was said about the rooms. The one that I want to particularly pull up, if I can get it, is an article that got real tough because I asked about the 800 rooms. Got downright disrespectful. And they ran, been running a campaign, what we can do to stop her from telling the people what's really going on. Well, it goes on to say, Reese wants a guarantee in writing, that's why I want stuff in writing, that the new hotel will have 800 rooms. Quote, "We've got to get 800 rooms back," Reese said. That puts us at an even Steven. And they talk about my questions. She said her questions were met with anger, but she would continue to ask the questions. So here we are, without it in writing. I kept saying, it's going to be, it's going to be 800 rooms. And I wish we can go get the tapes, but we working on other things. So I couldn't put the tapes up today. But there were tapes when I asked about the 800 rooms. And I was guaranteed it was going to be 800 rooms. Today, we're less than 800 rooms. In addition to that, we're talking, your company is talking about acquiring another hotel. When I thought we was working on this headquarter hotel. And now we got another hotel that's in the mix. But it ain't going to be the headquarter hotel. And so to me, if they have extra money, maybe that would cut down and put the money in this headquarter hotel. To me, it would just make sense. The other thing is, when we were trying to get the World Cup, this is how this all thing all started. They were saying in the World Cup document, big document we had to sign, it said that we would guarantee that the hotel would be up in 2026. We had it on tape. Everybody came down here. We would have a hotel by 2026. So it's just amazing that we'd have the hotel for World Cup people, but we can't get the headquartered hotel now. So that was astonishing to me. And every time, I would have to agree on one part with Commissioner Dumis on one part. Every day, we don't because now we got the terrorists. We got, the longer it takes, the higher the project becomes. We're talking in 2024 and $20,000, $20,000 is going to be a lot higher. So you'll be back here again saying, we need some more public money. It's a lot of public money in this hotel for us not to have the ownership. So again, I'm very disappointed because you've got to have the rooms. You don't have the rooms, you can't, ain't nowhere to stay. Ain't bringing the convention. You don't have the rooms. And so one minute, we were told that it was going to be shovel in the ground. One minute, it was going to be shovel in the ground, and we'll be ready to announce. One minute, we open in June 2025, is what it was put in the paper, WCPO, I believe. Told them 2025 of June, and I think, are we in June 2025? Almost getting out of June. Now we're saying 2028. Could we really have gotten that World Cup? We told them 2026 guaranteed, and Mr. Ludo signed it on behalf of Hamilton County. Man, we dodged a bullet, didn't we? Now, then we were told, CPO was told, June 2025. Now we're in 2028, and we're losing money. We're losing money because people won't come here. We'll get some small little things, they'll have some good PR behind it. I'm talking about real heads in the beds. The other thing is, my understanding, and I can't say the name, you said it. But my understanding, that hotel was built for business travel, transient travel, not hotel travel. I mean, not headquarter hotel. But maybe you have a plan to work on that. So I'm just disappointed. And in this capital stack, we don't talk about the money that we guaranteed for the garage that we don't make a dime off of, that we hold in a holding. Maybe Mr. Ludo can talk about that. The county had to do it, and the city had to do it. How much was that? Do you remember?
Yeah, so the WEX garage is what you're referring to. That's not part of the hotel's capital stack. I should have mentioned this at the beginning, but I apologize for not. So it's about a $28 million transaction. We purchased the garage with the city and the county's participation in that in March of '23. Both the city and the county committed to $275,000 annually. And it sits in an account that kind of is pledged to the state loan. So we're working on actually renovations of that garage right now and closing on different financing. And we're in negotiations with the state to stop the city and county's appropriations and return that money to you. So the intent is that that doesn't continue beyond 2025 and you actually get your proceeds back.
Okay. Because we were told originally we had to have that in order to move forward.
We did need that, yes. Yeah. We weren't able to secure.
Dealing with, you know, this area.
Yeah, we weren't able to secure financing for the garage with a speculative hotel. And so now that we're at this point, we're able to go to, Fifth Third Bank is actually lending on this.
Is there any interest when it sits there? They don't, they don't, it doesn't earn any interest?
The $275,000. I don't know off the top of my head. I think it's actually an account that's controlled by the county and then an account that's controlled by the city.
Then you let us know if any interest is, usually when you put something in a bank, they got some kind of interest thing. My point is, the garage with a speculative hotel. So now we'll have a garage, but now no hotel to 2028. And I do feel as though that's going to drive up costs because we see costs every day drive. I mean, eggs, everything goes up. So I do have concerns with that. But I do have concerns that it was, you know, that's why I like to get my stuff guaranteed in writing to the taxpayers. Because every time when it comes to the taxpayers, we so flexible because it's just the taxpayers, right? Oh, it does, we can go up, we can go more money. And I'm saying, what I'm hearing from the taxpayers is, the answer is no. We want to get some fixed costs, fixed timelines, and penalties when the timelines are not met. And it just baffles me that you had time to buy another hotel and we ain't got our hotel together. So I guess that's where I'm concerned about. Maybe Portman can answer that. Because I have some concerns about that because we've been wrestling with this thing for way too long. And do we have a brand for the hotel? It was in here in the article that a brand was getting ready to be announced. Do we have a brand?
We do. We plan to announce that probably in the coming month.
In the coming month? And then when is the, you had on here, June 2025. So what's the new date of a groundbreaking?
We have a groundbreaking in that package, I think, estimated for Q4 of this year.
What month is that for the people that's watching?
November, December timeframe.
So you moved it from June to December. Okay. And we will have a name?
Yes, there will be a name of the hotel at that point.
Okay. Okay. Well, and then the other thing I'd ask you now, when you get these, will you be paying property taxes on this hotel? Or is this a nonprofit, no property tax?
There will be property taxes paid. We will be implementing a tax financing structure for the property. But it is anticipated that school taxes are paid appropriately.
But the county itself will not be receiving any tax like we were with the Millennium. Millennium was a private thing and we collected taxes. What about the taxes? Grandma want to know, are y'all paying taxes like she got to pay?
The hotel will be privately owned, but there will be, for 30 years, a project-based TIF. So the three sources I went over that totaled the $8.5 million. One of that is from the project-based TIF. So yes, majority of the taxes will be used to pledge against the Port and state bonds and then the city loan.
So the property tax that would be paid into Jill Schiller's office, the treasurer's office, documented by the auditor, will now go back to repay the state loan?
Yeah, the public bonds that are being issued.
I'd just like to know how much of property taxes are we losing? Maybe you could get with the auditor to find out, what did we get on that property? We can't keep building things. This is what I'm trying to say. The old things and the old people, they got to pay property tax. Everything new, we want to give them no property taxes. If they build a new house next to your house and you've been there 20 years, the new house gets a property tax break. Everything we're building downtown, everything new, they're getting a break. But the people that, private owners down here, they've been paying property taxes. So that's a deduction from the coffers. So I would like to just know that and better understand that property tax. The other thing you talked about is a special district. And I've got some people that I know are watching because they've been asking, they live downtown and they've been around downtown, and some of them own some things. They've been asking me, my understanding, there's been some restaurants and everybody, there's a tax on everything. And I'm just be honest with you, I'm not the, let's just tax everybody. After a while, you breathe, they want to tax you. We taxing everything. My understanding that restaurants, now you have to, your tax to sit outside, the restaurants have to pay, it's a new tax. Now we're talking, if you got a business around this area, it's a tax. What, can you explain that? Because they're watching, they don't want a whole lot of extra taxes.
Sure. So the program's called New Community Authority. There is one that exists in the city. It's down at the banks. And so it's creating a new community authority that will be located kind of in like the central portion of downtown. Property owners have to opt in. It's not mandated that if you're in the geographic boundaries of the NCA that you have to participate. But right now, we have about 27 establishments that are committed to that. A lot of those being 3CDC tenants and then some partner developers as well, along with the hotel's food and beverage, and then the convention center's food and beverage as well. So it's a 1% fee. So it's not technically a tax, but a 1% fee on.
Fee is a tax.
On food and beverage.
But let me ask you this. When you say they opted in on their own, that's not the background I'm getting. I'm understanding they said if you're not a 3CDC tenant, you can barely come downtown and get a property because they not wanting to opt in. And then when you put your lease together, obviously, you put it in there, so they opted in. I want to make sure that whether you're 3CDC or if you're Billy Bob and got a business that want to go downtown, you can have an opportunity in Hamilton County. I don't want it to be a strong, it kind of look like, you know, if you're not in with this group, you can't get in. And if we can't get in, then we send everybody after you. We got everybody, building inspectors, everybody to run you out of town. So I want to, and these are real things. I mean, this is people, in here, we might have it. But when I go out there, it's, everybody, hold on, this is what's really going on down here. I also don't want to have a whole lot of boarded-up buildings. There's a lot of boarded-up spaces downtown. I mean, it hurts me being a born and raised Cincinnatian, what we used to really have. But also, when we get to these other space, the $52 million that we haven't paid back yet, the Millennium space that we're now going to rent it, or we have you all manage it, I'll just be honest, I don't want no rum. I don't want no rum, no, no, no rinks, rummage sale looking thing, where all we got is a whole lot of sponsors all over the place. I mean, when I look at Fountain Square, man, that Fountain Square, she was, uh, she was like, you know, when you go to New York. Now she's the side chick, and all we got is a bunch of liquor, and so I don't want that over there. I want to make sure that hopefully we'd have some partnership in saying what it's going to look like and be like, because, uh, you know, I want to make sure it's, 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 it's not that, that type of look. Uh, we, we do deals with entities, not personalities. So you all might have good intentions, just like, gentlemen, you weren't here originally. Twenty twenty-four, we didn't, twenty twenty-three, I didn't see you, now here you are. So we've got to make sure whatever we have, no matter who the personality is, who the commissioners are, who three CDC is, that we have a clear understanding in writing, that everybody has to hold to whatever our, uh, to, in our, uh, original intent. Just like now, we don't have none in writing, so now we got seven hundred rooms and not eight hundred rooms. Uh, but there is a room deficit when you're talking about a convention. They don't want to walk, that's what, that's what's so great about Cincinnati. We had, oh, man, you could be right here, and maybe you have to go across the street. But that's about as far as you got to go for your rooms, and that's what made us unique. Uh, but now, you know, I feel like we're spending more money, and we're gonna be servicing less people, because you still have a deficit. When you put those two hotels together, we won't say the name of it, but you go from twelve fifty-six to eleven hundred. That's a deficit. So just wanted to put that out, as you all are working through these things, and hopefully, uh, you can keep working and, and, and work those components. So those were the questions that I had.
Thank you. Thank you again, both, for being here. Appreciate the update. We'll look forward to all the events to come, to ribbon cut and groundbreaking and all the other stuff.
We'll be back in September for, for official approval on the development agreement as well.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, uh, we've got one last presentation, oh, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, that's right, I forgot.
You guys don't have to stay. I just wanted to make a comment, you're a big conception, I'm a member of the Visit Sensi Board, the Executive Board, and the Directors Board. If anything comes up in between before September, I'll be happy to bring it to the board.
Great, thank you, thank you all. All right, uh, we've got a presentation, the Forest Park TIF District. I know Don Jones is here, he's the City Manager of Forest Park, uh, so please come forward. Introduce the other member of your team, if you would. Welcome.
Morning, still.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Commissioners, thank you. Administrator, everyone, nice to be back. Thank you for having us, that's a great discussion there, glad I sat through it. Um, with me today, our new Economic Development Director, Chris Lewis. Uh, he's been with us a few months, so, uh, he's learning the lay of the land around here, so, uh, this is our first, uh, first TIF that we've done with, uh, with him on board, and, uh, we look forward to doing several more, we hope anyway. But, um, we have a, uh, short presentation, I'm not sure really what we need to do to get it up here. Hit a button? Oh, there it is, okay. Um, City of Forest Park is doing a small project. This is what we call the Halesworth TIF, that's the name of the street. The, uh, it's a twelve-acre infill site, it's owned currently, it's owned by the Whittenwood School District. It's an old school site, the former elementary school site. It's directly adjacent to, uh, a city park, and, uh, we are proposing a, a new housing area. The Halesworth TIF development, you can see from the, uh, the layout there, it's, it's a small, it's only forty-six, but they're brand-new patio homes geared toward a, um, a market segment that we really don't have in our community, uh, for our senior citizens and other folks who want more of a, uh, uh, less, less land, less, uh, less maintenance, uh, flat, everything else. Um, pedestrian connection is going to be to the park as well, you can see the park on the left. The, the developer is donating some park equipment, it's ADA compliant, and the subdivision infrastructure is all at the developer's expense. We're not going to be spending any of the TIF money and putting that money into the developer's pocket to lower their cost. Again, it's going to be forty-six new patio homes, there's a kind of look like. Uh, they are going to be for sale, they are going to be owner occupied, these are not rental properties. Again, they're marketed to empty nesters, seniors, they're going to be in the mid-threes, uh, depending on, um, you know, how, how they lay them out, they're all going to be custom. The TIF, you can see the district there, uh, it is basically the park, but we are, uh, looking at the streets that are surrounding it. And, uh, so we're going to use the TIF, uh, for street maintenance and repair, park improvements, uh, to the existing park, streetscape, enhance the area, and of course, we are, uh, targeting, uh, recreation as well, and recreation facilities in the City of Forest Park, trying to, uh, create a new, uh, community center as well. So that's what we plan on using the TIF for right now. And that's it. If I'd be willing to, and available to answer any questions, it's a thirty-year TIF. Uh, the schools will be made whole, and, uh, we're going to use, again, we'll use those funds to enhance the area surrounding the, uh, the TIF District, and, uh, you know, help out those existing, uh, homeowners there with street repairs and park, and park improvements, uh, to benefit the entire district. Again, this is an old school site, uh, also the sale of this property, uh, benefits the school district as well, because they'll be receiving all the funds from it. And they're, they've, uh, approved the, uh, the TIF agreement as well, and again, they'll be made whole.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. I just have two questions. Um, from the photo of the unit, are they ranches?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're single, single-story ranches. Again, more, on a slab, there's no basements. Uh, they'll be basically, again, marketed to the senior community, people that want to, you know, have, we have a lot of older, uh, folks in our community that are looking to, um, you know, they, they don't have the option to stay in our community when they want to move out of their big old houses. You know, when the kids move away, and they're empty nesters, um, and there's a, there's a, a great many folks that are looking to, uh, you know, to move on to something that's easier to get around in, single-story, uh, no yard maintenance, HOA, everything. Um, so we think this will be a tremendous asset to our community. We don't have this asset right now in these types of homes, so I think it'll be a nice, uh, complement to our existing, uh, housing, uh, infrastructure that we have right now.
Can you tell us what kind of community participation you have, uh, by way of the attitude of the community? I can see from the, the diagrams that there are a lot of residential properties around this property, around the park, and around the new development. Um, did you get community engagement and community input, and are they supportive?
Yes, they are supportive. We've, we've had the, uh, we've had the, at least two public hearings. Uh, there was really no pushback on this particular property. We have another school property, there's a little pushback on that, because it's larger, different types of homes, it's more dense. Uh, but in this particular case, uh, because it is only forty-six homes, a large twelve-acre piece of property, um, and it's a property that I think the community kind of, a lot of folks that live in the community, want this type of property. Uh, we've had a lot of folks talking about it, that we actually need to lean into that a little bit more. So we've had no real opposition to this, and we've had two public hearings, and, uh, again, the schools have had their, they've read this as well at their meetings, and we've had two, uh, two council meetings as well. Uh, we really had no public out, public, uh, opposition to this particular development.
Thank you, and just lastly, who is the developer on the project?
Developer is Moronda Homes.
Okay.
Uh, they've done the, um, they're, they're a large developer. Um, they did, if you're familiar with Forest Park, the Waycross. On Waycross, the new development, I think we have sixteen new homes that border, run along Waycross there. They did all of those homes during the, uh, two thousand, two thousand, or twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, so those are the last new homes that were built in our community, and, um, so they're really, um, you know, they love our community. They're trying to also to do the, the other larger, uh, twenty-eight acre site as well. Uh, so they're familiar with our community, and, uh, they're a good builder.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you for your presentation. Um, um, you said it's owned by Whittenwood City School District, you said they'll be made whole by, through the TIF, but, so is Forest Park going to purchase that land, or?
No, they're, the, uh, the school district is, they, they went out to bid, and, and obviously went through the process to sell their former sites. Um, so they're getting, I'm going to say two hundred and fifty thousand for this site, from the developer who's buying it. Uh, I think they're, they've either closed recently, or they're going to close, um, really close, I think they've already closed on it. Um, so they're, uh, they're ready to go, and the schools will get their two hundred and fifty. In terms of keeping, uh, the schools whole, that'll just be on the property tax piece. So, um, you know, yes, the TIF is there, but they're ba, basically the schools are going to get what they would have received had there not been a TIF.
Okay, good, good. And the former elementary school, is that Cameron Park?
No, that's, um, uh, I'm not sure the name of it, I'll be honest with you. It's not Cameron Park, it's the one behind, uh, up there by Walmart, behind Walmart in the H section.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then, uh, directly adjacent to the neighborhood park, that's Bruce Ferguson?
Yes, that's Bruce Ferguson Park.
And that's not very large.
It's not very big.
So what are you planning on doing with that park?
We're probably going, again, we're get, they're going to donate some ADA, uh, equipment there for, uh, playsets, ADA compliant-
Right.
Playsets for that, because it really isn't activated at all, there's really not much there. Uh, there's basketball courts, uh, that kind of behind the houses. And, uh, so we're really not, we don't have any real big plans to activate it that much, but we're going to put play equipment in there, walking track, access to the, uh, to the, to the neighborhood. Um, so that's what the plans are right now. We're, we're, we're still preliminary, we want to see what the, you know, how the money comes. Uh, but the plan is to, uh, to improve that park for the, for the, uh, for the neighborhood there, and the, and improve the streets as well, because once the, once the, um, uh, all the construction's done, you know, we want to have nice new streets there, uh, for the people who live there right now.
And, um-
I'm sorry, that's me.
Is that you?
I apologize. Oh, my goodness.
All right, somebody turn their-
I said, why don't they go out?
If you call me, if you call me, I'll never answer, because normally it's on.
Okay.
Normally it's on silent, and I'm surprised it's on.
So, um, and I was just going to ask one final question on the street maintenance and repair. It looks like, what, it's about six streets, or?
Yeah.
And so, are you using the TIF improvement money and additional monies to, to pave, or what do you?
Yeah, this is not going to generate enough money to repave all those streets. This is just basically to, to do the repairs that we can with the money that we have, do the park improvements. Uh, and then again, if there's excess, again, for, uh, public recreation facilities as well.
Okay.
So we haven't really made the entire decision on where it's going to be spent, but we know that we're going to have to do park improvements, and we know that we're going to, uh, have to do some street repairs in there because of the construction.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Thank you very much. Um, I just had a question about, you made a similar presentation, we had done a, might have been an enterprise, uh, zone, I'm not sure if it's Enterprise or the TIF. And on there, you always put down recreation.
Mm-huh.
So are we, are we moving toward that, or is it just, because you have it in here, you said we do this, we can get recreation. And the last one, you said the same thing.
Yes.
So is there a plan moving forward with that?
We are preliminary plans moving forward. Uh, we are, um, in the process right now of determining our needs, and what it should look like, and what, you know, if we built a building, or we purchased a building, or whatever, what needs to, how would we program that, how we would operate it. So we're in the preliminary stages. Right now, we're trying to put together the revenue stream, uh, with TIF money, uh, to help fund, uh, fund that community center. Uh, we don't, not even sure, we had a discussion last night about where would the, the best place need to put it. Um, and so we're, we're preliminary, I don't want to, I don't want to say we're really moving, we're really far along. But I would say that, um, there's, there's a ground swell of support in the community, I believe. Uh, we just need to fund, find the funding for it, and, uh, we're trying to use as much TIF money as we can, uh, that's available, and, uh, and, and point it toward that direction, because the community center will benefit all of the TIF districts. Uh, because the City of Forest Park being the second-largest city in Hamilton County, which we always point out, um, is probably the only, uh, city in Hamilton County that does not have a community center.
Yeah, well, I just want to put out there, I want to keep my eyes on that, because the location of Forest Park, and people can get there by highway, I mean, it's, it's valuable, very valuable piece of land. And I am not giving up on the idea of the amateur youth sports facility that can be both used for community, but also could be a revenue component, uh, but also a tourism. So you'd have tourism, you have res, revenue, et cetera, and youth sports tourism is ninety billion dollars, and we are-
I agree a hundred percent.
Ninety million, I'm sorry, we are missing out. So I don't know if there could be something, because you've got land, you've got the highways and byways, you can get people coming in from Indiana, Dayton, all these different areas, plus Hamilton County, plus the Butler County, the Warren County, everybody, it could become a destination, and also, uh, be a place where those who live there can, um, can also enjoy it, so.
Yes.
I'm not giving up on it, I just, um, I just think it's just so much possibility, so I'm glad that you are looking at recreation.
Yes, we're, we're definitely looking at it, again, we had a council meeting last night, and, uh, it, we talked extensively about it. Um, you know, what the need for it, where it could be, what it should look like, things like that. We've met with the schools, uh, a week ago, and, uh, their athletic folks, uh, their leadership there, including the football coach, everyone else that knows a lot about athletics.
Yes.
Um, just to get their expertise, and hey, what's community need, what, what should it look like? You guys are in this space every day. So we've had those discussions literally over the last two, three weeks, so it's ramping up, so. But I, again, I don't want to, uh, give a lot of promises out there to the public to say, hey, it's going to be there next year.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just, I saw it on your presentation.
Yes.
And I wanted to give you a chance to flush that part of it out, and, uh, I talked about all the other stuff, the tourism, the money that could come in. Um, but I also forgot to mention, you are the home of football and basketball.
That's right.
Girls' state champ, basketball, and football, so you are the home of state champs, so.
There's a significant amount of folks in our community that, uh, uh, are interested in getting a, what I would call, at least, a, I'm going to call it a world-class facility, where they can really, again, tourism, having the state championship-type games, or playoff-type games, and having, um, those types of events in our community. So there's a big, um, ground swell of support for things like that, and we're just at the tip of it, but you're right. Sports tourism, I think, is, uh, something that, is something that, site that we have, uh, would be ve- very conducive to that. And, um, we'd love one of these convention center hotels sitting there too, so that'd be real nice, but, um, yes, so we, I, I want to make sure that, you know, we're very transparent about that, so I always put it in there, because the plan is to, you know, use these TIF funds to help support and pay for the capital costs of building or acquiring, uh, that type of a, of a, of a building or a, a facility.
That's good, I don't want to steal her thunder, Commissioner Dumas, but we on our way for something big at Forest Park, so I know we'll see you.
Yes, 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 I'll see you then.
Thank you. Um, tell us what our, or maybe Jeff, tell us what our next steps are here.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners, so just, uh, briefly, um, uh, tax increment, financing districts in Ohio, uh, for municipalities or townships, when they're proposed at a, um, a level over seventy-five percent, or for a duration over ten years, have to come to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. Uh, the board has the opportunity to object to either, uh, the duration, the rate, or both, and the Ohio Revised Code, uh, prescribes a, uh, a compensation methodology, uh, for that, so there can be a negotiation between the county and the municipality or the township, uh, to, um, uh, to prescribe a specific compensation level, uh, that would come back to the county, um, uh, via the, the TIF. Um, based upon this presentation today, um, our staff will continue some conversations with Mr. Jones and the staff at Forest Park to determine, um, or to base, onto which to base a recommendation back to the board, uh, as we've done in the past. There have been, uh, two TIFs that we've done previously with Forest Park, uh, the board, and that, in those particular cases, I believe, waived, uh, the objections. Uh, we just want to have a little bit more conversation about the, uh, the TIF model, the, the capacity in the TIF, et cetera, before we would, uh, come back with a formal recommendation to the board, but that'll happen, I would say, within the next week or so. Um, at which point, if there is legislative action that's needed, we'll bring it to the board at an upcoming board meeting.
All right, thank you very much.
Very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here.
And everything you're, uh, everything you're doing for us, we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you maybe Friday.
That's right, that's right. All right, uh, without further ado, I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to ORC Section one twenty-one point twenty-two G two to discuss the sale or acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.